Okay, we'll move on to item number four. Uh zoning amendments to prohibit outdoor cultivation of cannabis uh for personal use and prohibit commercial activity related to cannabis presented again by Arnaldo Rodriguez, Development Services Director.
Thank you Mayor. So the item before you, it's the second reading of the proposed cannabis ordinance. The first reading was presented to the city council back on on November the seventh where staff presented a fairly detailed presentation and report considering uh or relative to to cannabis. So for the benefit of the council and community members, again, this is a change to the city's municipal code specifically regarding cannabis. And one of the proposals this evening is to consolidate the city's existing regulations. We also have some new regulations um as part of it as well. So just very briefly, and I'm not going to go into great detail, just uh simply in the spirit of time. Um so the city today, we we currently prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries. That was adopted in two thousand and eleven, that's today's regulations. In two thousand and thirteen, the city adopted its its first ordinance uh relative to to cultivation. However, at the time, it was specifically for for uh for uh for medical reasons, not for recreational. In two thousand and fifteen, the state adopted the Medical Cannabis Regulation Act, which which uh which established the framework for cultivation and dispensaries. Fast forward a little bit to proposition sixty-four, which was on the ballot and that was approved by the voters. That simply took it out of the realm from historically the medical marijuana or cannabis to the recreational cannabis. And it also stated that local jurisdiction must allow the cultivation of up to six plants per residence. That's not per person, but again, that's per home. And it also uh stripped some of the local authority to say cities you or or counties. You cannot regulate or you cannot include distance requirements from say sensitive uses, for example, a religious institution, a school, a daycare. April eighteenth of two thousand and seventeen, the city, we uh we adopted the interim uh urgency ordinance pursuant to proposition sixty-four. A couple of months later, um earlier this year, we we extended that ordinance. That ordinance is set to uh to sunset on June the second of two thousand and eighteen. However, the ordinance has been presented this evening would override that. Um so then it would sunset um on day thirty. So today, the city nearly defines medical marijuana and we provide regulations for the care for the cultivation of marijuana at private residences. Um so so what's changed? Uh well, quite frankly, with Senate Bill ninety-four. So Senate Bill ninety-four repealed um and consolidated all of the previous actions going back to nineteen ninety-five. Uh it also um amended proposition sixty-four. However, it incorporated much of the language and a couple of the key terms, and then it was retitled as well. So proposition sixty-four is now um under the umbrella of Senate Bill nine ninety-four. So again, our goal this evening is to to move all of the regulations that pertain to cannabis within one section of the municipal code. Where it's currently, it's in two sections. And then also, we are changing the term from marijuana to cannabis pursuant to Senate Bill ninety-four. So then we're consistent with with the state. So in terms of a quick summary of the proposed regulations, w- we are proposing that that we prohibit all commercial activity, sales, delivery, processing, manufacturing, and testing of marijuana within city limits. So anything having to do with commercial cannabis would be prohibited within the city of Yuba City. Um however, there is a pass-through clause, and this is required by by Senate Bill ninety-four. And what this states is is that a city must allow um a commercial delivery service to pass or to use city roads to get to another can location. However, w- we are proposing to prohibit the delivery within the city. So while you can use the city's roads, you cannot deliver within the city. And again, that's that's a requirement from Senate Bill ninety-four. So with that being said, staff is recommending that uh that the city council this evening concur that um that this does not constitute a project pursuant to sequel regulations or sequel guidelines. And then we're also uh recommending that the council this evening adopt the ordinance regulating cannabis uses and waive the second reading. And also, uh this ordinance will become effective within thirty days of passage. That concludes test presentation.
Thank you, um Arnaldo. Is there any discussion at this time being council members and Arnaldo? Uh seeing none, I have uh some speaker cards and requests to speak. Um first of all, I will start off with um, let's see, um. We got a letter from, I don't know how to pronounce, EVO Labs. Um and in here, there's uh speakers that would like to be, that's uh William Waldrop. Would you like to go up? Okay, so at this time, there'll be one speaker and that for representing you. Uh and that's Dr. Anthony Smith. May you please go to the podium, thank you.
My name is Anthony Smith. I am the chief science officer for EVO Laboratories. Uh and Mayor and council members, thank you uh for the opportunity uh to speak about this um issue. EVO Laboratories is a a national brand of analytical um scientific laboratories that performs quality assurance and safety testing on medical and commercial cannabis products as they move into the commercial stream. Uh the trend that we see nationally in states that are adopting, you know, commercial cannabis programs is uh mandatory required testing. That includes potency and homogeneity, which, you know, governs dosage and and control of the products that are made. Uh but more importantly, uh looking for pesticides, heavy metals, and other uh toxins and contaminants that are typical in in other food types. I'm neither arguing for or against the adoption of the ordinance, but I would like to recommend considering a uh an a an adjustment or an exemption maybe uh for a licensed, state-licensed analytical testing laboratories uh for a few reasons. Primarily realized that these analytical testing laboratories, uh we perform destructive testing of the product. Um you know, the laboratories have to collect uh certain bits of the of the the testable material, be they foods or or actual cannabis itself, um and perform, you know, chemical and destructive testing. So at any time, there are relatively small amounts of the materials housed at the laboratories. Uh the laboratories have pretty strict chain of custody controls, uh video security, alarms, et cetera. Um and so uh it's something that improves public health and safety, um but doesn't actually facilitate production and and commercial activity um directly. And so my argument is that an analytical testing laboratory is technically not a commercial cannabis business in that uh you know, none of its revenues or activities are are generated from the manufacture, sale, transport, storage, or consumption of cannabis. Um a- another important point to think about is that um in addition to contributing to public health and safety uh of of the people and the consumers of these products in the state, uh we are also a biotechnology business. Uh we operate uh very expensive and high-end analytical chemistry instruments. We employ uh a a number of trained, highly educated people that come out of pharmaceutical and food science industry. Um and so it it's an important um technology employer in the community. So I I in summary, I I would request that you consider council um adding a a clause or some ability for an analytical testing lab uh to op- operate within your city.
Thank you. Okay, um bring that. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? I have a speaker card, Karen Liggett.
Hi, my name's Karen Liggett, and you guys all know me on the council. I'm a Marysville resident, and I've been dealing with this issue for over twenty years. And trying to keep the residents in all cities and safe, especially our children. There has been numerous robberies, killings, everything. And I just got a report last month about the Marys- the Sacramento City Council had thirty dispensaries that was not doing their regulations. And they would not let the auditors on the property. So if you do decide you want to have any kind of business, cannabis business in your city, I would make it clear that you guys can shut them down if they do not abide by your rules. Because Sacramento's having a huge problem. And I am embarrassed sort of on our Marysville City Council getting the dispensaries there. They are doing your ordinance over there, they just did it. But I I just came from Live Oak last week, and the mayor there admitted he was a pothead. And the huge amount of citizens from Live Oak that showed up and give him a hard time, which he deserved. Because he was on his agenda and not the city of Live Oak. And I was very impressed by the caring and love of their residents there. I hope all cities have the love for their city like Live Oak did. I was very impressed by them. And that's the first city I've been to, which I've been to many, that really cared about their city. They really cared about their safety. And I have so many stories. And I I have one that um now I'm on the Facebook with the grandma. Her dau- her granddaughter died three years ago in Washington after it was legal. The guy was driving from a pot shop, ran up on the curb on Halloween night and killed a seven-year-old girl. The grandparents and the mother and the father still mourn that girl three years later. Every single night, the grandma posts a new picture of that little girl on Facebook. Every night, for three years. The parents and the grandparents and the family members and friends of these victims of these pot people. They, it's incredible. I get so many stories over the last twenty years and more twenty years.
Okay Karen.
But thank you. Yeah, just, I liked your ordinance, by the way.
Thank you Karen. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? State your name, please.
Elaine Miles, I never expected to speak on this. Do I understand this correctly, that if somebody is prescribed medical marijuana, it cannot be delivered to Yuba City? Please answer me. You've taken my time.
Correct. Can I answer Steve?
Yes, that's correct.
What do you do about the cancer patient that the doctor puts on marijuana? I'm almost seventy-five years old. My nephew at fourteen was a genius. He fried his brain with marijuana. I was against it for decades. Then I found someone that had cancer, and a doctor said that the pain medications and the chemo that they were giving him, he was not surviving. So they put him on a marijuana thing, a medical marijuana. I had never heard of that, but if that works, it works. Then I found out about the Nevada City teenager that had epilepsy. My brother-in-law had epilepsy, and the pills didn't stop those horrible seizures where he swallowed his tongue. But the one in Nevada City, the marijuana developed medically did stop it. So I don't want to prohibit it, but I don't want everybody to become a pothead. Cannabis versus marijuana, I don't care what you call it. But my husband's grandfather was actually a doctor. They prescribed marijuana and they prescribed heroin. But you know why that stuff went away? Because we took back the alcohol and Hoover proposed we prohibit these things so we could keep his people out there working. Please think about the people that don't have a way to heal whatever they have unless they've used something different. Does it have to be prescription pills only? I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, well, okay, go ahead. Please state your name.
Good evening, uh my name is Catherine Niemand. Uh three years ago, I moved to Yuba City, and I started a cannabis analytical lab. I actually moved my my lab. It was uh uh it was mainly a mobile lab uh because of the uncertainty of uh the laws around the state. We found it was easier to uh drive our lab around, and we'd unpack and set it up at dispensaries around Northern California and sit there for the day and test patients' samples. And it was it's was very simple, we just test the potency. And uh we would, we would help people. People would be asking us, you know, people would be coming in and they'd be creating what is called Rick Simpson oil, which is to help people eat for cancer. Or uh they would be making cookies, and we would teach them the math once they had the potency. So this was just pay mainly patients, this isn't commercial uh people selling. This was people that were using it mainly for their for their own use and which would be uh the same uh situation that'd be occurring in this community because commercial uh cannabis is not allowed, commercial businesses. But we taught people how to uh from the potency that they that they, our tests showed, how how much they were eating, how much, how strong their cookies were and whatnot. So we effectively helped them uh learn how much they were dosing themselves in curing their ailments or maintaining their health. Uh so this is another example of how the application of, if you allowed a lab, a cannabis analytical lab to uh to do business in Yuba City and offered services, you know, to the rest of the county and the rest of the area. It's not just for commercial, but it's for their own personal dosing and their own personal health. Again, public health.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna bring this back now to the council for uh discussion. Want one more? Okay.
My name is Joe Federico. I didn't come here tonight to uh, I'm a Yuba City resident. I didn't come here tonight to talk about this, but since we had other folks talk about it, I did want to uh just give give my two cents on it. A- as a city, it's really easy to take the conservative route on these on these kinds of things, right? It's very easy to say cannabis has been uh this prohibited thing. Uh it it has, it's easy just to say, we're not going to allow it, and we're going to stay conservative on the conservative side of that law uh because it's it allows our police to do their job the easiest, right? But the problem with that is, it's very similar to the ordinance you put in place with re- with um outdoor dining, restaurants, nightclubs, right? If you take the conservative side of that, it it prohibits developers from uh developing, bringing business sometimes to your to your uh community. We run the risk of being behind the curve with uh marijuana research, uh especially for for medical reasons. There, there's anecdotal proof everywhere, you can go online, obviously, and look at all kinds of stories about this, about especially the medical uh research. But one of the reasons the United States is behind the rest of the world in medical research is because we have this puritanical uh outlook on marijuana. We have the Reefer Madness uh uh leftovers, right? It it's important for us to try to stay progressive on this issue, because if if we if we don't, we run the risk of staying on the conservative side of that, which means we're not at the the knife's edge of the potential business of especially medical marijuana. We we will, we will run uh employers out of town, potential businesses. Five years from now, this may be, especially on the medical side, I have I have my own concerns about recreational use, but especially on the medical side, uh other cities having uh large laboratories that do research. And and we wouldn't have any because we don't allow something like like uh delivery to those medical labs. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, bringing it back to the council for discussion and comments.
To the mayor.
Thank you.
We have uh conducted some public workshops on this very matter. We have been educated the best we can on what California's laws are. Um certainly trying to stay fairly compliant with what the citizens of Yuba City, how they voted during the election that legalized uh recreational marijuana and have to take that into account as they are um our constituents here. And yes, it is a conservative community, Mr. Federico. But that doesn't negate the ability for people, because the way the law is written, they have access to um cannabis products that they can either grow or obtain outside of our community. We have heard from the experts along the way that the linkage between each one of these facilities are pretty much reliant on the other. So a large commercial grow would also have the distinct need for laboratory testing, would need transportation capabilities, and would need um an outlet to build it, to sell it through. All of those need to have some center so they're not being transported large distances. This is what the experts have told us, and that's how the industry is trying to set itself up. There's a number of opportunities for individuals to obtain at whatever level the type um of of product, cannabis product, that they wish to use recreationally or medicinally as uh recommended by doctors to be able to do that. The levels of the material and the type and uh potency of the different materials, cannabinoids, are all based on whether it's recreational or it's medicinal. The need for testing is certainly there, but it should also be done um in the same vein um in legal uh application and not just simply move into a community um and and set up shop without advising the municipality of um its intent. And I I'm going to ask, because he said he wanted to speak, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Waldrop um to go up to the microphone, because I have some questions specific about your business in town. Mr. Waldrop, who who uh presented Yuba City with an application for a business license?
Um the lab was originally formed as Green Style Consulting. It was formed by uh Ms. Catherine Amant uh in two thousand and fourteen, I believe it was.
Who who, I'm gonna, I'll ask it more directly. In two thousand and sixteen, who applied for the business license in the city of Yuba City located at your address on Burns Drive?
Yeah, it was uh Ms. Amant.
And in that application, are you aware what it says the nature of the business is?
I don't have that available at me at this point.
Um I believe that the word agricultural um was used, analytical um might have been added into that, but nothing about uh cannabis?
Well, cannabis is an agricultural crop.
Okay, um so we wanted to try to keep it under the radar by using a more general term, even though the doctor told me tonight that the primary job is analytical um uh data for medical and commercial cannabis. Not an agricultural product that would be subject to licensing and accreditation through various organizations, primarily the USDA, am I correct?
Um I'm, I I don't have a comment on on that, sir.
Okay. What type of equipment do you have uh in that facility on Burns Drive?
We have a um HPLC, High Pressure Liquid Chromatography Equipment, uh that will determine the the potency, specifically whether or not it has high uh THC or has a relative CBD, uh so that you know the exact ratios, specifically if a uh production facility is trying to determine if they're trying to treat a different type of condition or disease or symptom of those diseases.
How much product is pers- are currently going through that facility?
Um an average uh uh test that we would get would be roughly two grams, two to three grams of product of uh from a batch. Um none of the clients bring batches to the facility. Uh so as I think you alluded to a few moments ago, part of the supply chain and product moving everywhere. Um if a large grower.
I I understand it's sam- I understand it's sampling.
Okay, so we bring two grams, two, three grams back, and it's immediately, as Dr. Smith alluded to, put into a solution that makes it unconsumable to the human health, and is put directly on the equipment, tested, and a physical certificate is provided to the grower or manufacturer before it can be moved through the supply chain outside of the community.
Okay. Um I would assume that this facility is accredited um to some degree?
Our methods are accredited, they've been approved by the Oregon Regional Accreditation Lab.
Not what I asked. Has has your facility been accredited pursuant to ISO seventeen zero two five?
The facility at this time is not accredited as seventeen oh two five. Uh we have made the applications to commence that process.
I would assume that your application um is is probably uh has some more truthful information in it than what Yuba City has received as to the operations at that facility on Burns Drive? What I'm getting to, Mr. Waldrop, is you also uh in that application indicated that there were three employees, and it was simply making a thousand dollars a year at the time that that you guys uh presented Yuba City with an application for a permit to do business at that facility. You called it an agricultural um analysis uh lab. It's a, it's a cannabis lab, am I correct?
It does test cannabis, correct.
How much money is is derived through that facility approximately?
Um right now, it's probably about five, six thousand dollars a month.
Not a thousand, a year. I, your hand is up, and I don't even want to see it up right now because I'm not asking you the questions. He's the CEO. He's the CEO, he wanted to talk. I'm giving him a chance to answer some questions because um when someone comes in front of us and asks for uh consideration, how can we consider someone that hasn't been truthful with us? You don't need to apply. Okay, that's that's first. Um how do we know lacking accreditation uh as accepted through the ISO seventeen zero eleven standards? That's what the accreditation body says, that that they make sure that you operate within international standards, and you'd have none of that.
I would disagree, sir, and actually seventeen oh five does discuss operational.
Seventeen zero two five is the ISO standard in which you need to offer. Seventeen zero two five is the ISO standard in which you need to operate. That says what type of equipment you need to operate and you need to have accreditation uh at ISO seventeen zero eleven. It's a fact. The cannabis industry has put that out there. Here's another question for you. When we put equipment into buildings and we get a business license. One of the things that we're required to do is is we have unsecured property tax in the state of California. And as a result of the equipment that you have inside that facility. How much unsecured property tax was paid to Sutter County last year?
I don't have the information.
It was zero, I'll answer it for you. We've done the research, okay? If you wanna come here and present yourself as an above board upfront and you want some type of of consideration from me. I need the truth, okay? We don't need somebody running under the radar, trying to to disguise himself as something that they're not. And then coming and telling us how to do business in Yuba City.
Not telling you how to do your business, sir.
Okay, I'm, I have no more questions for you, Mr. Waldrup, and I appreciate the time. It's a little bit of a grilling, but you are the CEO, you wanted to talk tonight. And I've given you the opportunity, if you want anything else to say in three minutes, I'm sure that the mayor would allow you to do that.
If you'd be so kind, mayor.
Okay.
I I we understand and um, you know, up until recent passing of the uh the rules that were mentioned. Uh, Martha nineteen or two thousand, excuse me, for being a little nervous now, uh two thousand fifteen, uh proposition ninety-four and two thousand sixteen. Um, you know, this has been a a state, there has been a little gray area. You know, and and people are coming out, we're here tonight to come to you and say, look, you know, there is a past. Now that there is a state guideline, now that there's a state operating within the Cole memorandum, that we are here to operate. Safe, standard practices. We are hiring employees, we have great quality employees that live in Yuba City that are employed here. And we wanna continue to support that. We understand that, you know, cannabis is is as I mentioned earlier, is is a conservative aspect of it, right? I mean, four years ago, I'll tell you, I I had nothing to do with cannabis, I was told it was bad, stay away from it. But I've learned from time and time again, talking to patients, there are so many benefits to this plant. That I won't say it's a cure, it treats symptoms. So was it in the past perfect? No, but we're here right now in front of you to tell you that, look, we are here to operate as a business, to support this industry, to. We're here in front of you today, say, look, we are here. How do we cooperate? How do we continue to move this forward to the next level? And we will do that in every aspect that we can. I I do wanna mention one aspect specifically, I wanna get into the technology of a technical aspect of seventeen oh two five to seventeen oh eleven. One of the things that F U S proud itself is that it has developed the highest level of accredited standards, uh proficiency. And proven from a third-party perspective that the methods we deploy for the protection of the product, protection, excuse me. Of the consumers of this product to ensure their safety. Uh, and that is specifically, and I know it's not seventeen oh two five, it's actually a step above that. If you look at the Oregon Regional Accreditation Lab, uh. I forget the last word, pardon me, but um, point being is that we have standards that are proven, accredited. And demonstratable, repeatable to ensure the safety of the product as it's delivered to uh the patients. I'll leave it at that, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, um, now seeing no more comments from the. Okay, gonna bring it back to the council and uh uh chat some more about if we wish. If there's no more comments concerning it.
To the mayor.
Yes.
Again, I think there's a misconception within our community as to access. Um, to product as the law goes into effect. And thank you once again to our uh inept legislature in the state of California to push up a. The rules and regulations to almost the last minute. So a lot of jurisdictions are having to play catch-up or will not have. Um, ordinances in place as of the first of the year. Um, this is something that that uh they got caught a little bit because they didn't understand the complexity. Of what they were getting into, but individuals can grow within this jurisdiction. Can grow up to six plants within an enclosure. For either recreational or medical purposes, that is what the law says. Any person can go to a dispensary, whether it be RX or recreational after the first of the year. Pick up the product, take it back to their house and consume it. There's nothing in this ordinance that prevents that. There will be, I'm certain with Marysville's activity, a dispensary in the city of Marysville. Or two or three, there may be a commercial grow site. That is their decision, that's the decision that that uh jurisdiction has made. Um, tonight, our our role is to look at and make sure that we are compliant. With the uh law as set forth in the state of California to meet the minimums. But not to extend into the commercial operation within our jurisdiction. That's it. And with that, I.
Complete.
With that, I would move staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Uh, with that, I will call uh all in favor. Uh, opposed? Unanimous vote, thank you. I will just make a comment, as you see, we do our study, we do, we, nothing we do, uh, we approach on a simple matter. Uh, we dig deep. And if we find out that we're not able to uh make a decision on something, uh. Because we don't feel that we're comfortable with the lack of information or the information we have. We do extra, we stop it and we move on to the next meeting or two to make sure that we have things correct. So at least according to our community and their usually their desires.